Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order at seven oh five P M. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. A reading of the meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Um, Ms. D. Giuseppe, can you please call attendance?
Oh.
What?
Verzella.
Here.
This is Farrar.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mr. Walker.
I'm gonna vote against that, but I'm here.
This is Prisco.
Here.
Mr. Boone.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting? Moved by Mr. Walker.
A second.
Second by Ms. Farrar. Any discussion? Being done, can we please have roll call?
Mr. Boone.
Yes.
Mrs. Verzella. Yes. Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar.
Yes. Ask a quick question, since I wasn't here, am I not supposed to vote on those minutes?
Probably abstained.
Abstained. Okay, sorry. That's what I was thinking. I wasn't. I did watch the meeting, but.
You watched, but you didn't take part in this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we're gonna take out an order a little bit. We will have Laura Pomarisi, the Director of Athletics, come and give us the spring sport recap.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy summer. Despite the constant rain that we had this spring, all our teams were very successful. Every one of our spring sports made it to the state tournament. Starting off with boys lacrosse. Boys lacrosse had an overall record of eleven and seven, five and one, and took second place in the NJI LL Kimber Division, losing by only one goal to the team that were the champions. Boys Lax had twelve selections to the all-league and all-conference teams. Liberty Division All-Conference First Team, Joey Howe. Second Team, Gianluca Chiketto, Pierce Finkel. Honorable Mention, Jaden McHugh. Kimber Division All-League. First Team, Harry Sworder, Ryan Caballo, and Charlie Waka. Second Team, Luke Friedman, Jesse Wagner, Drew Cruzness, and Trevor Giaruso. Honorable Mention, Sean Donahue. Boys Track and Field had a successful season. In the SECs, they placed second. Evan Sang broke the high jump record, clearing six-five. The four-by-one team broke their record again, running a forty-four thirty-eight and winning themselves a sectional title. Jaden Nygro, Malachi Richardson, Logan Notig, and Liam McInerney were on that team. This four-by-four team also, four-by-one team also qualified to run in the Adidas Nationals in North Carolina. Twelve athletes qualified at state sectionals to advance to group championships. At groups, Evan Sang placed second in high jump, qualifying for meet of champions. Boys Track, All-Conference First Team, Logan Horton, Aiden Ippolito, and Evan Sang. Second Team, Nicholas Fredette and Dean Algieri. Honorable Mention, Jaden Nygro and Tristan Newman. Softball. Softball had an overall record of thirteen and eleven, conference record of seven and three, and took second place. In the postseason, they reached a state semifinals against the number-one team in the group, Cedar Grove. Eight players received All-Conference Liberty Division honors. First Team was Danny Embriano and Nina Maglifiori. Second Team, Sinclair Zamborski, Emerson Garrett, Sienna Armani, Viana Arrington Phillips. An honorable mention was Brielle Marchese and Leah Haggerty. Golf. Golf finished with an overall record of eight and ten despite the challenges of a competitive schedule in the American Division. Seven players recorded season scoring averages under fifty. Our team's scoring average of one sixty-one reflected steady improvement and a balanced lineup that contributed at every position. In the tournament play, they secured seventh place in the county tournament and eleventh at state sectionals, competing with some of the top programs in the state. Honorable Mention was Jack Flannery. Girls Track. The girls were the top small-school team in Essex County Championships and Essex County Relays. They won for the second year in a row, the North Two Group One State Sectional Championships. Twelve girls qualified for the state group championships. Gwen Neal broke the two-hundred-meter school record of, and broke a forty-year-old group meet record in the eight-hundred meters. She was first-team All-Group One and qualified for meet of champions and New Balance Nationals. First Team went to Lauren Chupak, Lucia Grant, Sienna Griffin, Kaitlyn Skauffo, Gwen Neal, Morgan Rossi, and Natalie Aloia. Honorable Mention was Jess Theobald and Lexi Guarino. The twenty-twenty-five Verona Hillbilly baseball team enjoyed their most successful season in many years. The team finished nineteen and seven with a top five in the very difficult Greater Newark Tournament. The team finished tied for second with a seven-and-three SEC Liberty Division record and secured a two-seat in state playoffs, where the team made it all the way to the Group One sectional championship game. Seven players were elected for all-conference. First Team, Charlie Pepe, Andrew DePaul, and Frank Ori. Second Team, Jack Capparimo and Joey Farmer. Matt McCon, Matt McMahon and Sean McElroy were selected as honorable mention. Boys Tennis had an overall record of thirteen and six, second in SEC Colonial Division. Qualifier for first singles tournament was Mikey Siclary. He was the first state qualifier since twenty sixteen. Players need to win at least sixty percent of matches to qualify for individual tournament, and he was one of one hundred twenty-eight players across the state to qualify. Qualifier for doubles tournament, Griffin Russo and Nicholas Sage, first doubles team to qualify since twenty seventeen. The players need to win at least seventy percent of matches to qualify for individual, for group doubles tournament. Griffin and Nick are one of fifty-five doubles teams across the state to qualify. They both received third-team All-Group One. First Team All-SEC was Griffin Russo, Nicholas Sage, Michael Siclary. Honorable Mention was Christian Callback. And finally, Girls Lax. Girls Lax finished fifteen and four. They were the Freedom White Conference Champions and the SEC Liberty Division Champions. They were the number-three seed in SEC County Tournament. First Team, NJIGLL Freedom White, Julia Dacey, Riley Kenrick, Reese Leftglass, and Jane Sworder. Second Team, Kelly Barrow, Izzy Heimerly, Lily Reedy, and Sophia Simone. Honorable Mention, Caitlin Petrusia. SEC Liberty Division All-Conference First Team, Julia Dacey, Riley Kenrick, Reese Leftglass, and Jane Sworder. Second Team, Kelly Barrow, Lily Reedy, Sophia Simone, and honorable mention, Izzy Heimerly. Finally, at our senior sports boosters that was held on June twelfth, the Athletes of the Year were awarded to Jesse Wagner and Lucia Grant. The maroon and white recipients were Jane Sworder and Joey Farmer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It sounds like a very successful season. Uh, congratulations to everyone. So moving on, we're gonna go to the superintendent's report. Ms. D. Giuseppe?
So I'm gonna just highlight, um, the conference that I was attended last week. Um, it was phenomenal, and hopefully next year we can find a way to bring some more than just me, although I do come back in turnkey, but this is, um, this was an exceptionally good conference. So, um, it, the conference is run by Instructional Empowerment. Um, they are a company that, um, it's kind of like the research organization of education. So big researchers are there. They're doing cutting-edge research, both um, in how students learn better and also, um, they have a whole, uh, team of brain researchers. Dr. David Sousa works with them regarding, you know, using PET scans to, uh, to watch student brain activity as they're doing, uh, um, doing different tasks, um, and they really are the cutting edge of educational research. They do this every year. This is their fourteenth annual Educators Conference. About thirty-five hundred teachers, coaches, uh, I mean instructional coaches, principals, assistant principals, district administrators uh, attend each year. Um, and I've been lucky enough to go. This is my second time going in my three years here. Um, but I have gone, uh, five years prior to this. And each year it's better. So this year's theme was building expertise for deeper learning. So keynote speakers, Hamish Brewer, who he is, uh, he wrote the book Relentless. He is known as the relentless tattooed skateboarding principal. Just did some really cutting-edge shifts in, um, in changing educational norms. So he spoke about, um, he was a, from New Zealand, but he, um, is at the University of Virginia getting a doctorate, but he's, was an award-winning middle school and high school, I'm sorry, elementary and middle school principal in Virginia. Um, and, uh, Virginia has county systems, so that's a big, those are big schools that he was in charge of. Liz Dozier, uh, was so unbelievably impressive. So she is a former principal at Fenger Academy High School in Chicago on the South Side. Uh, when she started there at thirty-nine years old as the first, um, African-American female principal um, that was under forty, uh, they had a, an arrest rate in the building of three hundred arrests per year. They had a forty percent dropout rate and a graduation rate of under eighty percent of those kids that stayed in that were capable of or qualified for graduation. In six years, um, that arrest rate was down to ten. The dropout rate was down to two. And her, um, graduation rate was above ninety. Since she's gone, they are at zero arrests, a hundred percent graduation, and zero, zero dropout. So she's been gone now three or four years. Um, but she is a founder of Chicago Beyond, and she does a lot of consultant work. Dr. Marzano, I unfortunately missed his, uh, his keynote. He's always great to watch. I was on a plane going there, uh, the morning that he was speaking, so I was unable. But Michael Toth, who was the CEO of, um, I have LSI, that's what it was called for years, of Instructional Empowerment. And he is an award-winning author and an amazing educator. So I have a little story about him later on as well. So the topics that, um, and the sessions that I attended were advancing teacher growth using the developmental scale and the focused teacher evaluation model. That's the model we went to this year. Um, we finished one full year. Changing students' lives by shifting mindsets, empowering teacher growth, mastering coaching conversations, getting students to knowledge utilization, developing learning tasks that foster deep, uh, application of content. The Science of District-Wide Adoption for Redesign of Tier-One Instructions, Part One and Two, and Mastering the Art of Lesson Planning: Do's and Don'ts for Effective Teacher Planning Sessions. These were amazing sessions. Each one was better than the next. And, um, the Science of District-Wide Adoption, uh, Part One and Two were actually, uh, provided by Michael Toth. So just a little picture of the importance of this, um, of this conference. So if you look at the, the chart here, you have cognitive complexity going from low to high up on the left and student agency, student independence, or, um, uh, just how well students can work on their own autonomy, you could, you could put in there as well. So if you look at those four hot quadrants, the bottom left is low complexity, low agency. High complexity, low agencies, which means not cognitively rich and teacher doing most of the talking or cognitively complex, but teacher doing most of the, the work. The kids are not doing it on their own. And then you have, um, you know, something that maybe kids are doing independently, uh, but it's low complexity. Um, and then finally, high complexity and high student agency. So our teachers would, in this quadrant, would be getting kids to cognitively complex tasks or content or vocabulary or something that is asking them to stretch their mind and do it showing a lot of autonomy and high agency. So that's where rigor lives. So that's where, when you're deepening learning, that's where you want to be up in that right quadrant. So I'm gonna give you a slightly different picture of that same graph. So as we move up, um, in terms of cognitive complexity, we start with retrieval, which is basic recall. I, I can pull information out. I can remember things. I can find it. Comprehension, I can basically explain it, um, but those are those lower on the cognitive complexity. Then you get to analysis, and then the highest level of cognitive complexity on the taxonomy is knowledge utilization. So students that are really utilizing information to make decisions, to, um, think critically, to, um, for instance, in writing, uh, having an argument and defending that argument is at knowledge utilization. If we were in a science classroom, develop, developing and testing a hypothesis would be at knowledge utilization. So if we look at getting to rigor, and it's not a straight line, right? We, we move in between those, um, levels of cognitive complexity. But if we're trying to get to rigor, we have this kind of wavy line that does that. So down here, when you're at retrieval and comprehension and low student independence, we're gonna say that's blue box teaching. Up here, where you're at high agency and high cognitive complexity, that's green box teaching. So how much do you think across the United States and Canada are we blue box teaching? What percentage? Yeah, a little. It's actually between seventy and eighty-five depending, but blue box instruction is greater than seventy, mostly above eighty-five. Um, how about up in that green box? Less than five. It's less than five percent. So here's the interesting thing. When you are in, uh, what we've learned about student brain rewiring is that years and years ago, they thought IQ and cognitive, uh, uh, ability was set, right? It was genetic. It is not. But what we do know is the more we spend with kids in blue box instruction, the harder it becomes for them to get to green box instruction. So what we need to do is get to green box instruction earlier and stay there longer, and we find that that creates more cognitive, uh, uh, ability among our students. And one of the arguments is, is that for districts like Verona, districts like Mountain Lakes, districts like, you see me, put me, put us right in there with Mountain Lakes. Other districts that have, uh, high affluence and, and, you know, support for learning, our kids do okay even if we're in blue box instruction because we have support at home. We have parents that are reading to their children from the Times and, or, or other, uh, periodicals. They're having conversations about what's happening in our country. They are filling in the gaps. Um, would our kids still benefit from more green box instruction? Absolutely. But what's not happening in areas of socioeconomic, lower socioeconomic, is they're in blue box instruction and not getting that parental augmentation. So the, the argument is for this particular, um, uh, instructional empowerment, this, uh, company is to get more school districts knowing how to get to green box instruction. So we've been working on getting to green box instruction, um, for the two, two of the three years that I've, that I've been here. Um, I didn't call it green box instruction. That's a new term for me. So the model of instruction, which is, uh, deeper learning, um, is a model that is daily, a, a daily instructional process where students collaborate, they peer coach, they peer teach while engaged in rigorous, standards-based tasks. So beyond the familiar grouping strategies, um, it's, it's backed by neuroscience and other scientific reasons. As a matter of fact, what I didn't put out there, I didn't want the graph to be completely overwhelming, is those things that improve when you're in green box instruction, especially with the model of instruction where you're using academic teaming as your mode, uh, powerful instructional model, is what happens when you put kids together in organized groups in terms of their ability to have conversations, in terms of their ability to interact with one another, in terms of their ability to have empathy, to learn how to have empathy, because not everyone's born with that, right? That's a taught skill. So social-emotional learning gets better. Um, there's a whole school of thought in that kids that work in teams, wrestle more, have more productive wrestling with content than if they were sitting passively absorbing information from their teachers. So it empowers students to take ownership of their own learning and behavior in school districts that have adopted this, and I can tell you, um, my former school district adopted this, and we did this for five years. We saw H I B infractions go down, um, more, um, strong, uh, communicate, uh, communication and connections between kids and their teachers. Um, and it has the power to improve academic achievement and social-emotional learning simultaneously. It has the power to close achievement gaps between students of differing abilities, prepare students for college in the workplace, because I don't know about you, but I work in a school, and I don't ever work by myself. We, we work in teams. Um, and I know, um, it's, it's the way you work, right? Um, and it promotes equity and access. So why this model? It's fun for kids. I've seen it. It is, um, they are excited about learning. Um, it prepares students for college in the twenty-first century workplace. It uses a brain-friendly teaching and learning process, um, narrows achievement gas, boosts student ownership of their own learning and behavior. As I said, promotes equity and ac- access and combines social-emotional learning with cognitive rigor. So, um, this conference, as you can see, was very exciting for me. Um, it is something I'm looking forward to gradually bringing in. We are, we are working at the early, uh, uh, part of this, but I, I cannot wait till I see my more academic teaming happening here, um, and hope to, um, be able to bring some of our principals to this conference next year. And, uh, oh, the good news. So I was invited uh, because they see my name pop up down there a lot. I was invited to, um, a VIP reception. So I'm thinking, oh, this is gonna be what, fifty, sixty, seventy people? It wasn't. It was ten of us. And Michael Toth, the CEO, uh, was there, and I got to speak with him. And, um, in conversation, I told him, you know, we have significant budget issues here uh, that I didn't have in my former district, that I was able to bring this model of instruction more easily, uh, in my former district. And he said, um, that he really would like to help us. So the first step, he is going to do a, and be virtual because he lives in Florida. Um, but he's gonna do a virtual book club with our administrators on the power of academic team. Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
It's very exciting. Yeah, and I also was interviewed for a twenty-five-minute video interview. I know. When it comes out, I'll, I'll tell you.
Have to put that on the website.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't know about that, but. So really great conference for me personally, uh, but I think what we can bring to the district as a result of, um, learning experiences like this. I've already created the turnkey, the first turnkey session for the administrators, uh, on July seventh, and then again in August, uh, when I have all of the ten-month and the twelve-month together. And, uh, we are set to begin really using the, the, uh, the protocols from the focused teacher evaluation model in our planning next year to really drive home those, uh, high-yield instructional stra- strategies that are in that particular model. So that's my report for tonight, and, uh, thank you.
First of all, I want to come to this. I want to go to this next year, just, uh, personally. Um, I just have to commend you because I admire how, as a superintendent, you have so many things that you're handling as far as policy and budget and all those things, but, uh, right? But the, the way that you keep your finger on the pulse instructionally is commendable.
Thank you.
And this is really good work, and the fact that you take the time to go to, this isn't the only one. I know how many conferences and things of that nature you go to. Um, and I just think that it's wonderful, and that's how we, that's how we move. That's how we move the needle. So thank you, and.
Thank you for saying that. I really, I enjoy it, so it's not completely selfless. I do enjoy that. It keeps me sharp, and, um, you can't move the needle if you don't know where the needle is going or where it is, so.
Um, one, one question I had, and you clearly explained all the takeaways, and this is tied to a question I asked, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, and, and you touched on this, how getting to the green box also requires or is benefited when you have a strong fa- uh, family unit to fill in the
Yeah.
uh, fill in the gaps. Um, was there any discussion or will there be any plans to how we articulate this to the families around town on how they can help us get to that green box without, you know, using the wonky terms and stuff?
Yeah, part of, part of this whole experience is what naturally happens is, um, kids go home and at a dinner table or in the car, someone says, what'd you do at school today? And a very excited child who had a really interesting lesson where they were in charge of the lesson, or they were solving a problem, that will generate conversation, but we also will have, we can, we can develop one-pagers. This is what your child is studying right now, and I think our elementary teachers do a nice job of that. These are some questions you might want to ask your child. These are some readings you might want to do if you're interested in extending it. Um, those are things that, uh, we did when I was, uh, teaching teachers how to do this model, uh, in Kinnon, and, um, it, there's a natural excitement when kids are, when you walk into a classroom and there's a buzz of kids working together and you hear a child say, um, um, I respectfully disagree, and this is why. Or, I agree with you, but can I please add on to that?
A yes and.
Yeah, yes. And so they, there are small cards that have agree, disagree, add more, uh, have questions. And on the back, in those same spots, there are little STEM starters for to train them. So when they're working in their groups, instead of just interrupting someone, they hold up the card that says add more, so that the person who's talking knows that they want to add more, and then they, I'd like to add that, or I would like to say that or whatever. So it's, it's a training. It's almost like responsive classroom. If anyone is familiar with responsive classroom. Responsive classroom really says if the teacher sets up his or her classroom, uh, it was really great routines early on. They get more productive as the year goes on. So this is training in social-emotional, it's training in, in empathy, it's training in cognition, it's training in how do we think differently? Um, and all of that comes with like, this is what we're doing in the classroom. This is how you can talk to your kids.
And, you know, again, thinking from experience and talking to other parents, I think, I don't want to say it's easy, but it seems to come more naturally easier with the elementary school kids. How do you see that continuing? Junior high is really tough and high school is really tough, but how, how does that, you know, interaction with the family continue?
Um, it, it would be more individual. So, um, kids at those levels don't need it, don't can articulate better what they're doing, so they don't need those one-pagers to come and in ninth grade. If I ask my son in ninth grade, well, not go crazy. My son would say, I didn't do anything today in school, Mom, but.
Yeah.
We watched movies.
First mine said it, it was school.
Yes, yeah. So, but I did learn to say, not what did, um, like, did you, what did you do? I, I changed the question up, so he had to give me some answer. Um, give me one thing that you did today or something. So, uh, but he was an exception. Um, I guess the excitement should carry up, but individual teachers can send some things for their classes as well. I know as a teacher, when I taught, I had a one-pager that went, it was like a syllabus for parents that said, this is the unit that we're working on. These are the topics you may see your children become interested in. You know, if you have any questions and would like more information, let me know. I don't know that everyone is doing that, but I was a teacher.
You used to ask, what was the best thing you did today at school and what was the worst thing?
That's a good question.
You got some very interesting answers.
My son would be, I'm not sure, and a lot.
It was not. Yeah, I went, is usually it, so. Um, but thank you. That was, uh, very informative. Um, we have no committee reports. Um, and so we're gonna move on to public comments on agenda action items only. Okay, seeing none? We will move on to discussion items, old and new business. Does anyone have anything they wish to discuss? Okay, I just wanted to, um, and I, I told, uh, child that I would, I would make note of this. A child, Verona child, uh, who's also actually at our CPAC. Uh, they typically come to a board meeting and give out grants to teachers. Um, this year, because of our change in schedule, they were not able to make it. So I did just want to announce the, the awards. That went out this year. These typically go out to student, to teachers who work in our special services, our special education department. So there was three five-hundred-dollar grants and one three-hundred-dollar, a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar mini grant. The five-hundred-dollar grant recipients are Leslie deGrot Axelrod. A resource teacher at Lanning Avenue Elementary School. Meredith Beelin, a special education teacher at H B Whitehorn Middle School. And Michelle DeRosa, a school psychologist for both F N Brown and Brookdale Avenue Schools. And the three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar mini grant will be shared by Grace. I always remember Minerva, Minerva Bueno, a preschool special education teacher. And Sylvia Vassalo, a registered behavior technician, both from the Lanning Avenue Elementary School. So congratulations to all the award winners and thank you to all the people who submitted of. Applications this year. And I think since the last meeting, we had graduation. We graduated a hundred and fifty students. Unfortunately, due to the weather, we had to move inside at Caldwell. But it was lovely. They actually got extra tickets. I'm not quite sure how that meant, how that works, but whatever. And I think everyone kind of rolled with it and although we do want to graduate on field whenever possible. You know, sometimes we have to make that last minute call. So congratulations to the students, to the families. And to the administration at VHS, including Mr. Cogdell and Mr. Murkler for making sure this, this went off. Really without a hitch. So it was very. It was a good time. Anyone else before we move on? So we are gonna go on to agenda action items. Can I get a motion to approve action items A one through A? Eleven.
I'll move that.
Moved by Ms. Prisco.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ferrera. Any discussion?
Um, yes, I would like to. Just make a couple of comments. First for Mr. Wertz. I wish him well. He is very loved by all the students here at the high school, so I do wish him well on his next endeavors. And also Ryan Brown at the middle school. Uh, the, the students, a great volleyball coach, great personality, just a great guy. We're losing two great people, but wish them all the best. Where they go. That was all I wanted to say. I think.
What numbers were they?
A, A three. Where they're on, they're.
Oh, oh, they weren't there on. I was looking for the individuals. Okay.
Sorry.
What happens when Mr. Cruz goes on a vacation?
I know.
Whenever you're ready, we can do roll call. Take your time. We, you usually, I know. We're ready for roll call.
Okay, thank you. I'm getting the hang of it. Uh, Mr. Walker. Your first.
Yes.
Mr. Boone.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella.
Yes. Okay, moving on to education. Can I get a motion for B one through? B eleven. Moved by Mr. Boone.
Second.
Second by Ms. Prisco. Any discussion?
I have one quick question for our out-of-district placement students. Is that? Pretty much standard, like the total? End of like, I think it comes to over like two, almost two point five million. Is that what we pretty much look, look at almost every year for out-of-district? It's, it's just, this is like the norm. It's not any, okay. Thank you.
What happened in the past is they didn't all go on in the same agenda.
Okay, it just seemed like.
It's overwhelming.
It, yeah.
Yeah, it, because we would put them on as we got the contracts and Evelyn wants to do it all and and as much as she can at one, in one. So you're not having drips and drabs, you're going back to.
Thank you. Does busing come out of the, is busing included? In, under the tuition or is that something that would be spilled separate?
Generally, in a, in a, if it's a parent paid to. Transportation contract, it would not be included here. If it is, if tuition is being provided by these schools, it is, but most tuition is, most transportation is not included here. So that's another tremendous cost. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
That was motion by Mr. Boone, seconded by.
Myself, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Walker. Mrs. Ferrar.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella.
Yes.
Mr. Boone.
Yes.
Moving on, we're gonna do athletics. Can I get a motion for C one through C five? Moved by Mr. Walker.
Second.
Second by Ms. Prisco. Any discussion? I just want to say I love that Carly Woodman is now the head varsity coach. She, for those who don't know, she graduated.
Nineteen with my son, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Yes.
Um, so it's really nice to have her come back and. Coach our girls.
I was gonna comment on it, but I didn't want to do another.
If there's no other comments, whenever you're ready for roll call.
Mrs. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Boone.
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. There are no items on the facilities. We're gonna go to finance. Can I get a motion for E one through E? Ten. Moved by Mr. Boone.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ferrer. Any discussion? I just want to thank the Lanning Avenue S C A for their grant for the clubs at Lanning, the after-school clubs.
Hi. Mr. Boone.
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrar.
Yes.
Mr. Walker. Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Okay.
Just so that you know, you all voted for the next one because I was in the wrong. But there's a thing is right now. We need it.
Moving on to governance and policy, can I please have a motion for F one?
So moved.
Move by Ms. Prisco.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ferrer. Any discussion?
My, my only discussion point was I went through a CUSAC a couple of months ago and. They, they asked us to do two bus drills each year. So in the past, it used to be the one.
You don't, you don't transport with buses?
Uh, we'd have like just the, the, the small special service bike.
Maybe that's changing. We have, we were CUSAC two years ago. They were fine with this, but it used to be one if you don't bust your kids.
That's what we, as well. But that's, that's the only thing that jumps out at me here is that we did do like a last minute bus thing just for that. That's, but that's, that's all I have.
Thanks. Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Brazella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrar.
Yes.
Mr. Boone.
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Okay, and then moving on to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who cares to comment? Okay, seeing no one coming to the podium. I will call for a. I will close public comment and then. Uh, the next scheduled public meeting will be held on July twenty-second. Confidential starting at six and yeah, Tuesday, July twenty-second confidential at six P M. The public session starting at seven P M. In the Verona Learning Commons. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Move by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Prisco. All those in favor?
Hi.
Um, this meeting is adjourned. It is seven forty-four P M. Have a good weekend, have a good summer.